Oh, Jack. I have a missed call from the chief, so.
Oh, to me to the email or to the webinar?
Are we ready?
Laura, is he talking to, she talking to Andrew?
Yeah.
We're not ready yet. A McIntyre at west mall.com.
Not McIntyre, McGuire.
I'm sorry.
Details, just deals, yeah.
Um, do you need to put the?
You want water?
Uh, no, I just have one, thank you.
What did you hit me?
The thumb drive, I want to make sure I can get it from here. I don't know if it needs to be plugged in in a different spot since I'm here.
Uh, the plug is over here.
I gave the thumb drive to somebody.
To Jamie?
Yeah, I think so.
The red one? Cause I have the blue one.
The blue one is what we need.
Oh, the blue one is what we need.
Yeah, the blue one should go in there.
And all the other, other previous mayor.
There we go.
That's what the YouTube. No, he won't be leading it. He'll be your first supporter.
Somebody needs to lead some.
Oh, oh, oh.
This needs to be turned on.
In a humble doing. Is again looking for a town manager. They had one pick. It sounded like one of the roll plays.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Laura.
Ended up, you know.
There it goes.
I mean, if something like that happened to be that, it'd give me all the more reason to go there and be town manager.
I'll hold your name and number. I'll be over in ten minutes.
There you go.
We're waiting on Andrew, is that correct?
Yep.
If he can make it.
He was trying.
Do we have to have Andrew for this?
I think so.
You don't have to.
Mike has to make a tip he's blowing out of you down there.
No, he should be, uh, Drew's not licensed in Arizona, so.
Not yet.
You like this more than lawyer, are you?
Um, you know, I'm still a lawyer, um, for a special district in Colorado.
Okay.
So I do that once a month.
Andrew, can you just move this over so Jamie can see this?
Yeah. I'm trying to copy it, so, um, but I don't understand why it's not.
I know it is for us.
That's the wrong way, she wants to be able to see it.
It's just, it's amazing to me.
Yeah.
Oh, wrong way.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The amount of service. I mean, we've got our contract work that we're doing, but, I mean, like today we had five service calls. Two pumps to pull. And we already had everybody busy, so.
You know, just nothing inside, no electrical, no insulation, no. Exterior, you know, the wood siding.
Jamie, if it doesn't work out, though, I mean.
Been doing it for about thirty-two dollars.
The problem is is that Andrew doesn't have to have the proper.
With his price increase, it doesn't know. So I read my list back through. Fifty-one dollars per.
No wonder you've been busy, they lack the price.
Unfinished, exterior, just a shell.
Are you doing my neighbors?
Laura, were you able to look up anything on the salary?
It's half done, but I mean, it's just, it's done on the weekends.
Okay. Let me see if I, I haven't had.
We looked her up on LinkedIn.
Corner house lot got sold.
Your stuff, so.
Okay.
So very first one on the.
Yeah, uh-huh. And, uh, they dug two holes, I guess, checking for, uh, septic or something. And now they're all filled up.
She called her a mini Cecilia.
Oh, really?
So I just want to make sure she's not like four hundred pounds and.
Wow, 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 wow.
So.
You didn't hear that?
I didn't.
I'm not a deciding person, so.
We're gonna get a new neighbor?
You know, that she took showers and, you know.
You don't hold on that?
Yeah, there's no.
I thought it was a relation to, uh, Matt and Jennifer.
Brooke, I mean, down at the end of the cul-de-sac on the left side.
Yeah.
Woman there.
Oh, okay.
For son Mark.
Yes.
All right.
I wonder why he didn't know that.
I know, I was like, stop.
Okay.
His contract would say that.
And it does say. Good. So, I haven't reached out to him. I'm gonna be in a meeting with him tomorrow about something different, but I did send that down to him and I said, you know, take a look at your contract, apparently it's in there. I should have. And PS, we need a computer certificate. Yeah, I know, I'm like, wow, we're not doing that, so, okay. It happens, yeah.
Is there anything healthy over here?
Lots.
The healthy is over there, the unhealthy is over on this side. If anybody wants the junk food, it's over here. And I have cookies.
Broke out.
Cookies are good.
Oh, there he is.
I see somebody here.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Andrew.
Hello.
He's on vacation in, like, Bora Bora, so.
Wow. Yeah, should, should I turn the camera around so everybody can see it?
Where are you?
We can't see you right now.
You can't see me? Yeah. We'll do this. I'll come back inside so you can see.
There you go.
There you are.
You can't really see the beach from here, but.
Oh, nice.
There I am. That's the, uh.
Where are you, Andrew?
Where are you, Andrew? We're exploring former US Marine installations in Bora Bora.
Oh, I was right for.
Historical.
You make way too much money, buddy.
Right. Twenty-fifth anniversary, spend a little more.
Okay, are we ready now?
I believe we're ready now, Jack.
Jamie?
We are ready.
Okay. Cost me to order, can we have a roll call, please?
No pledge.
Kind of mayor you are.
I'm following what it says.
Is that working? Okay, cool. All right, let's start with Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
And Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Croft is absent.
And your mic isn't working, so.
Oh, wow. My voice carries.
We gotta do it again.
I think it worked in the system.
All right. So.
Let's rock and roll. Have we pulled to go into executive session?
I make a motion, we move into.
We're going, sorry, may I make a motion, we move right to executive session, item six on the agenda?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so now we're gonna go into executive session, pursue it to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one point oh three eight one for discussion consideration for employment, assignment, appointment, or salary, and discussion finalist list to interview for position.
Thank you for the text message. Thank you for the text message. If you have something scheduled, I'll go over that.
All right.
Yeah, I didn't know if that'd be appropriate, I figured it was the easiest stuff.
It wasn't easy, yes.
It's like coming to church or something.
I'm tired.
Sounds like you're coming to church or something.
I'm so glad.
You got all the people scared already, or what, Jack? What do I do with this? I put it up for some reason. So six and seven are done. I think we should move right over to number eight, personally.
You're so predictable, Jack.
I was just saying, I think it's a good idea. Wouldn't have to listen to Joe, or Laura, or Maggie, or Joe again, there's Joe twice.
Got two Joes.
This is too much Joe for one day. Excuse me? He says twice on the agenda.
Yeah, but that's, he's got.
Okay. Everybody's back, Annie, you ready?
I put it up here.
Oh, is that what you want?
Yeah, I think they should present our.
We're good to go, girls? All right, we're gonna reconvene in, in regular session. Uh, we will state that we gave direction to our search firm, and they will continue and report back. Okay, item number two, presentation discussion regarding budget capital items for each department that were postponed due to COVID-19, Joe Duffy, Administrative Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, I have just a really short presentation this evening.
I'm not mayor yet.
Or Mr. Mayor-elect and Council members. Wonder, it was a pleasure being here this evening. Um, in your packet, I prepared, basically copied what we talked about before during the budget process, of all the capital items that the town had basically deferred once COVID hit, and we started dealing with that. Um, to, but before we get into that, I thought I'd just give you a little brief recap of where we are financially and what I've seen, because the reason we put all these items on hold is because we were expecting to have a significant financial dip in most of our major revenues. Um, unfortunately, or fortunately, that did not happen. Our revenues have been pretty stable. And if you look at this chart here, you can see, the blue column is actually what we budget every, what, what we estimate that our savings account or our fund balance will be at the end of every fiscal year, the amount. And as you can see, typically, we underestimate it, we, and the actual number, we always have a little bit more that we roll over than we planned. Well, this year, we continued that trend, and part of it was because we did receive the CARES Act money, but also, starting in March, we really cut back expenses. So we basically, we basically ended the fiscal year, this through June thirty of twenty, with an extra two million dollars in the bank, in our general fund reserves. So it was very positive. I mean, we were thinking, I mean, normally that'd be like a million, or eight hundred thousand, but having two million, that's, that's a very positive thing for us. We looked at all of our major revenues, and this is just the updated graphs that I, I showed you, that I've been showing you, uh, lately, you know, through this whole process. And the projected cumulative is what we assumed our revenues were gonna be, and then the actual is the gray number on each of these graphs. As you can see in our major revenues, uh, city sales tax, we're actually exceeding our projections. And what that's telling me is that with COVID, people were shopping here at home, and not going to Prescott and Prescott Valley, I think that contributed. Plus, we're also getting a lot of the retail, the online sales activities, so if you buy something on Amazon, or Walmart, or Target, you get charged sales tax, we get that piece. And I now have that separately broken out from the Department of Revenue, so you can see, and it's actually been growing every month. So our revenues are coming in strong. I know, you know, we were hoping, or we were anticipating a nice little dip in these, and we just didn't see it. Um, construction sales tax, we're still seeing good growth there, and our permit fee revenue through September is up substantially, so we're still seeing a lot of permits taken out, and a lot of people still building, so the building activity is doing good, and our revenues are proving that out. Um, our monthly state shared sales tax, and this is the portion of sales tax that the state gives us back, this is one of them I was really worried about, really about even, and we just didn't take that dip. I mean, things like spring, spring training and all the tourism effects of COVID really didn't hurt us here. Uh, vehicle license tax, we figured, okay, people aren't gonna be buying vehicles, which we now know that vehicle sales are actually going up, and so we're finally seeing a little bit of increase there, so that's right on projections, basically flat. And the big one is HERF, this is the one we were really worried about because of people not driving, not paying their gas tax. That didn't happen. We did take a little bit of a dip for a while, but it was sort of insignificant, and now we're finally just about even with our projections. So overall, the next, this agenda item and the next one with the merit increases, I mean, we held off on those because we thought we were gonna do this, and we ended up not doing it. So we are in the financial condition to actually approve both of them, and so staff's gonna, that's what staff's recommendation is this evening. So, that's all I have on this, and I'll answer any questions you guys might have.
Questions?
None. How do we put any of these projects back on the board?
Well, how we put them back on? So.
Go ahead.
Do we do, yeah, cause basically, uh, the manager, myself, we decided to still put them all on hold, so really, we're just asking for general direction.
Yeah.
Should we go ahead and just proceed with them as if, you know, and continue to start working on these capital projects? We probably won't do them all this year, but there's some that we probably should start getting busy on.
Yeah, so the Vice Mayor asked us to put these back on just kind of as a, um, reminder of the capital items that we had put on hold, so. That, you guys already approved the budget initially as, um, these items on there, so we're just letting you know that as of now, we feel it's safe to proceed ahead with the capital items, so.
So you still feel you're feeling comfortable even with some of the things that we're seeing right now? In other words, I know that we've done pretty good, better than expected. Right now, we're seeing huge increases in construction materials.
Mm-hmm.
Do we really think that our permits and our con, you know, that all that is gonna continue? Um, when you start talking about increasing somebody's material cost by fifty percent to build a home, I'm not sure how many people are gonna move forward. So I'm, I'm just being cautious and saying, you know, do we really feel good enough to take that next step at this point?
I do, I feel, I feel, and one reason I say this, one, we watch it every month, and so if we do see a dip, we can just put the, pull the reins back and say, well, let's hold on a little while. But I'm also seeing a huge influx of California people coming in and snapping stuff up. I'm hearing stories back, it was oh-six, when the top of the housing market, when people would put their mar, house on the market and it sold in twenty-four hours. You're starting to hear those again, so we're getting frothy. I think it's something we need to watch, especially our construction sales tax, but we'll see it. I mean, we'll see it dip and be able, and, and we're, we're up high enough that we'll be able to go, okay, we can survive that little dip if it happens.
And, and speaking for me, with my little business that I have, it's not stopping anything.
Yeah.
I've bid jobs and I've had to go back and increase the materials on it, and they said, okay, no problem.
And I think.
I haven't had anybody pull out, excuse me.
No, excuse me, I thought you were done talking, so, I'm sorry.
I was completely done.
And then the other area that Joe mentioned, um, has to do with the online sales tax that we're now collecting. I don't know if you remember about a year and a half ago, the Wayfair decision.
Yeah.
So we didn't used to collect that sales tax, so it's almost like a whole new source of revenue that, um, even with the dip, it, you know, we're, we didn't lose a step.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It didn't seem like it was working.
So, and she is correct about that, and in fact, I'll share that number with you guys, as it's been, I've had it since November of nineteen, and you can see it just continually increases every month. Now, it's not just directly related to the online sales growth, because it could be people who used to report online sales through their retail classification who are now dropping it down to the right category, but it's still a very positive number and a positive trend. Yeah. So.
Mike, you got any?
Oh, I'm good. I think it would be good to get them back, but that puts people to work for our capital projects, so we gotta do it, so we're gonna get more income back into town.
Who is Cory?
I'm good.
Cory?
I'm good.
Any, you're done?
I just need clarification, are we, are we still holding these projects, or are we now giving direction to move forward with them?
That's what we're given, correct, to move forward.
Yeah, so we'll be given the process and, you know, over the next seven months. Trying to accomplish as much as we can.
These projects will still come back through council when it comes time to.
Yeah.
Spend money on them.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking in?
Yeah, I was, I didn't know if I.
It just doesn't give them green light to go crazy.
Pick or, pick or choose which ones we wanted.
Right, one of them, like plastering to pool, we need to get out to bid for that, so it's ready before the next season starts and things like that.
Okay.
Original, you said that was minus the, uh, the COVID money on your first slide.
The CARES Act?
Yeah, actually, it did, part of the bump was because the COVID money was added into it. About eight hundred thousand was COVID, and the other part we'll see this year come in. So we received it all at once, but we only could record it as revenue as we used it to support the police department, so it was about eight hundred, six hundred thousand dollar mix. Very technical, but a portion of it was because of COVID.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So annually, that is what really bailed us out, though?
That made it look really good, so we were probably a million two more than what we estimated anyway, because of all the savings and just shutting everything down. So both those factors helped significantly.
All in, all done?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Okay, item three, uh, presentation discussion regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-one merit increases from Laura, and I, I do need to say, this was me pushing this one. When I saw the budget numbers, I didn't think it was, they haven't been held up, so I think the employees should get.
The election's over, Jack, you won already.
What's that?
I said the election's over, you won already. Sorry, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor-elect and Council. Thank you for that. Um, I have just a really quick presentation, three slides. Um, the first slide is kind of small, hopefully you can see it. Um, Joe and I actually thought this was really important to include in the merit increase presentation, um, and it goes over the full-time equivalence from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. There has not been a change, so we've been even. There, um, was a change, a, a transfer of some staff from customer service to the, uh, planning division and the building inspection division, but it was just more of a reorganization, and other than that, the FTE count is the same. Um, this will give you an overview of our total burden, the gross wages and the benefits, this was really interesting to me as well. Um, overall, the total, total burden increased by two percent. We were originally projecting, um, an increase of, I want to say it was three percent. Uh, gross wages, we were projecting would increase by three percent, that has increased by three point oh-five percent, and the benefits, that was where we saw the biggest savings. Um, actually, it's decreased. It went down, um, and we, we have, um, realized, or we will realize, an expected savings of negative nineteen percent, if you wanna, I don't know how you say that. That has to do with, um, point one nine percent, negative point one nine percent. That has to do with, um, the actual buy-down of PSPRS. Uh, we did that annual buy-down of three hundred thousand dollars, and that made the biggest difference in the benefits line item. Um, so I thought that was very important to point out. Um, the last slide that I wanted to share with you is, will give you an overview of the cost that we projected and the act, um, that we projected and the actual cost that we'll, I guess, realize. Um, so for the COLA, the cost of living adjustment, we, um, had included a one percent COLA, um, and that actually did take place in July, and that amounted to approximately fifty-three thousand dollars. We also had included a total merit increase, and that's based upon performance of just under a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We did not roll that out in July. We are recommending to roll it out effective November twenty-ninth, and what the actual cost to roll that out would be ninety-nine, approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars. So we'll see a savings in merit increase, savings, of just under seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, when we put the budget together, another item that we included in that was, as I had mentioned, it is a pay for, for, pay for performance merit increase. So as an example, if you get a two-point-five percent rating, your merit increase would be one-point-five percent, and you can see the, um, corresponding merit increase to the ratings. Any employee whose gross wages was ninety thousand or more at the time of the budget approval, those employees would receive a merit increase that was one percent less than what you see here. So if somebody got a, uh, four-point-five percent rating, instead of getting a merit increase of two-point-seven percent, they'll receive a one-point-seven percent rating, or a merit increase, I'm sorry. So that is in, it's still included in this recommendation.
Okay.
That was for the ones over how much a year?
Ninety thousand? As a base wage.
Ladies and gentlemen, sound good?
Annie? Nothing else?
So we have a pay-for-performance structure, and in the previous review period, every employee is given an evaluation, and in that evaluation, they're evaluated on their work results and their observed behaviors, as well as any goals that have been assigned to them. And each, I guess, uh, work result and observed behavior is weighted with the employee, um, on the front end. So when they get their evaluation, then they are given a rating, it's weighted, and they get a final rating that's averaged. Um, and then there's a graph up here, or a matrix up here, and whatever their rating is for work results and observed behavior, where they, I guess, cross on the matrix, that would be their rating. So as an example, if somebody got a four, then we look at what the assigned, uh, merit increase for a four percent is, and that was two-point-four percent when we were setting the budget. So that's budget driven, those percentages. And the average increase was three percent that we came up with.
Three percent or a?
Rating of three.
Three.
Three percent increase overall in budget numbers, like the dollar value increased by three percent.
Everybody across, every employee could conceivably get a three percent?
No, so that, there was a, uh, when we actually evaluated all of the performance evaluations, when we received them, there was a bell curve, and I'd say a majority of the employees received a two-point-four percent merit increase or a two-point-seven percent merit increase, a rating of four and four-point-five. Um, but the individuals who were, had a base salary of ninety thousand or more, kind of brought that down to a three percent average. Salary increase.
Anything else, anybody?
Not me.
Okay, Laura, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is number four, discussion regarding old home manner, business plan from Maggie Tittleback. Tittleback.
Titeback.
Tittleback.
Titeback.
Titeback.
Good evening, everybody. So this is a team effort. This is involving all departments, what we're gonna present to you this evening. You can go to the next slide, please. So I'm not gonna read this, go ahead and read it for yourselves, please. This is the kind of purpose of this entire plan. And it's very top level, so we'll get into some more of the details as we go along. But I just wanted to introduce it and let Mark come up and kind of take it away from there. And then each department will address you guys.
Good evening, Mayor-elect. Good members of the council. So continue on with this group effort. Talk a little bit about Old Home Manor and, and this business concept that you're gonna hear about this evening. So unlike most municipalities, Chino Valley owns a very large tract of primarily undeveloped lands at Old Home Manor. And it's attempting to attract various types of entities that could add significant value to the community. And just as a little historical note, Old Home Manor was purchased for two very important reasons. It was an old garlic farm that had historic water rights that were then converted to a shared water supply. So there was one important reason the town purchased the property was to get the water rights for activities relating to the needs of water. And second, because it's centrally located within the corporate boundary of Chino Valley, that they thought this could be maximized for the benefit of the entire community. So just a little historical note. So the fact that Chino Valley owns this very large tract of land, in essence, makes you a developer. And whereby the town can determine how and when improvements could be implemented for the development activity of, of this property. So the goal tonight is to talk about a business model and I'm gonna lead it off here. You're gonna hear various activities that could get the ball rolling. How do we get the ball rolling for Old Home Manor? How do we get the concepts out there? And just talk about some of the concepts. What are the returns on investments? What are the investments themselves? What are the ancillary benefits to the entire community? And how could this business plan be structured to monitor succinctly the investment and return on investment ledger? And that's something I think Joe's gonna touch on. And then the last thing we'll touch on is, what if we just keep status quo? Keep things as they are currently? What to expect from that perspective? So just want to remind you too, to get the ball rolling, we've already got the initial integrated water master planning. I'm gonna go to the next slide, please. So we've got the integrated water master plan, which is gonna provide some of those answers regarding where and when water and sewer extensions should happen. They're gonna be developing a five-year capital improvement plan that will then have a five-year projection on annual projects that can be looked at and evaluated for what lands that would potentially benefit and who would benefit and so forth. So up next, kind of talk about that financing is Joe Duffy to the finance director to talk about some of the financial models that we can look at as the next steps and keeping the ball rolling with the financial model.
We did not practice this, just to let you know. So if you can go to the next slide. So one of, one of the ideas is basically to set up, maybe I'll go to the second part of the slide, is a separate enterprise fund for all the activity we've had out there. And I prepared a spreadsheet, maybe we'll forward it to him next time. But we've invested, overall, we've, we've done about two point eight million dollars in investment out there. And one point six came from the feds, two hundred and fifty came from the state and seventy-five thousand came from APS. So the town of Chino Valley, with all the development and all the plans we're doing now, we've basically invested a little over nine hundred thousand dollars towards this.
I'm sorry, was that nine hundred?
Nine hundred thousand. So the idea is to take all that investment and set it up in its own little fund, so we can keep track of it. And then as we lease land or set up, and basically set up like in a special assessment district, so we'll know how much we have invested per acre of Chino Valley's money, federal government's money and everybody. So then when we decide we want to get a return on that, we'll be able to calculate, okay, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in each acre right now. And so we want a fair return back for the taxpayers of Chino Valley over whatever time we define. But it'll basically lay out the district and lay out the highest and best likely use of each of the parcels out there. And then when we sell them or lease them or however that transitions, we'll know what we need to get back to return, to make a fair return on investment for the community, the Chino Valley citizens. So that's the initial concept. Because you want to be able to, basically this is an investment that we're telling our community that's gonna pay us dividends in the future and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna reap, you know, some sort of return on investment on it. So that's really the concept that we're looking at doing. And doing a special assessment district, what you do is we look at all the parcels that are involved, that we're gonna use. The ones in the industrial park will have a higher use, a higher value than any parcels we set away, set aside for recreational use or other uses throughout the park. So, does that make sense?
Does, to me. Questions, guys? Bonnie's got something.
Can you smell the smoke?
I could see it.
No, I, I, I don't, I'm fine with the, the thought process.
Yeah, because setting it up, I mean, we're looking to make money on this and basically return for our citizens. And so setting it up and then I could, we can report to you, you know, yours, you know, especially once we start leasing property and stuff and having income streams coming through. We'll be able to track and see exactly what we're doing.
Okay, Annie?
Basically a profit center.
Yeah, and for us, that's called an enterprise fund.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, for one, just because we own that doesn't mean we're a developer. Yeah, I think that's a, just doesn't. When you start calculating, do we want to get into the, are we in the development business? I think not. Are we, do we want to possibly try to create a stimulus for, for economic development? Yes, that I believe is, is the job of government. Becoming a developer and saying, wow, we, how did we acquire, first, how did we acquire that land to begin with? Was it donated land?
It was not, no.
No, we purchased.
We actually expired the mortgage, I want to say two thousand. When Carl Tenney was our manager, that was paid off the mortgage. They got it for the water rights, is why they purchased it.
Eight hundred thousand? The number I have is.
It's eight hundred and some thousand.
Eight hundred and some thousand dollars.
So, so we already have?
Yeah, we've already paid it off.
Yeah, we have no debt.
And plus we got the water rights, which gave us value for that also.
Then he's going to the spreadsheet.
You're, you're talking about doing this value and what we paid for it, what we got back.
Right.
Has that already been calculated at that? Or are we now, as you said, right at nine hundred thousand?
It did, did not include the acquisition cost, because it happened so far away. I figured this is sunk cost. I can include it, I have no problem pulling it out.
Well, if we're gonna play developer.
Let's do it, okay.
Then let's do it right.
Okay, okay.
Now, for one, again, I, I don't like even being a developer. Now, when, if we do stimulate the economy in Chino, there's additional revenues that are created that come back through taxation. So this, this isn't just a basic, like a developer would look at. It's not a matter of black or red, because there, there's a whole nother aspect of this that does bring money to the town as well.
That's correct.
Now, are we prepared to, to be seeing that as well?
There's, there's gonna be revenue streams that are generated because of the activity out there that we are not gonna be able to capture.
Or what?
Or accurately recapture.
Financial pluses there are in the rest of the community.
That's.
Right.
That is correct, that is correct.
You're talking about job creation? Is that what you're talking about? Then turn your money.
If, if it does create jobs, yes. Then, then that's a, that's something you can physically tie to that property.
That's correct.
But that job creation there, as those people now spend their money.
Turn their money over and then, yes.
And elsewhere in the town, the developer doesn't look at that.
Right. And you as a council with a public entity, we don't have to make a profit. You can say, you know what, we've invested here, we've, we've attracted a hundred jobs. There, we're not generating a penny of sales tax, but we're making a product. And that investment that we made on that, for that forty acres, we're good with that. We know we're getting a return. You won't see it in a number, but you know you're getting a return.
So, but your original.
But.
Premise, though, we were supposed to look at this like we're a developer. And how much are we gonna lease this for? Now, we're gonna get rent money and lease money and.
So what we really need to do, what I'm proposing for the, for the taxpayers, is to know how much we've invested out there and keep a really good track of that. You guys will decide how much income you want to generate off that, or if you want to generate any. But that's, depends on what the development is that shows up to be out there. But it'd be nice to be, when the taxpayers ask you, Cory, how, or Councilmember Mendoza, how many, how much have we invested out there? We've got the streets, we're putting curbs and all this stuff. You know, tell them, you know, we're keeping track of that and we know exactly what we're doing and we know why we're doing it, so. And whether the enterprise fund ever is in the black, that's really up to you guys through the years. So, but I really do think it's important to keep track of it separately. If that's up.
Okay.
So I, I wanna, I wanna go a little farther with this, with your thoughts. So what is it, what is it that you think maybe should be done differently than what Joe is, is putting out there?
That I don't look at this as a developer, as something that we're trying to make money. I do look at providing a stimulus to the community, an economic stimulus in this. And again, not to compete.
Which is somewhat of a byproduct. I mean, it, it happens because of what we do.
Yes.
Okay, because of our investment, yes.
Cause you'd have to include your lunches and your house rentals, you know, all that is what you're saying, because that could stimulate house building, rent tax, sales tax for more jobs in their product.
Yeah, and we couldn't capture that.
It'd be difficult.
But if you guys, you know, let's say we, we invest four million dollars as a community in this over the next ten years. And we do have a couple properties that are paying lease back, we can bring some of that money back. And whether we ever recapture it all, it's okay if we don't, because you guys can make that decision to not to. But at least you'll know what your cost is, so when you're negotiating those leases, you'll have at least some basis of, you know, what we spent.
I think part of the value too, if we're fortunate enough where we start having some businesses locate out there, there are economists who will do some studies and talk about the turnover that the benefits are. So I think you can start quantifying some of it, but then you can say, it was worth the investment, the investment was X, Y and Z. And we know that that's now turned over, whatever, into our community, so we thought that was a good investment.
Yeah.
So I think it's just a responsible way of accounting for what we hope the investment and what the return will be out there.
Basically a profit.
So it's not really returned directly to us, but it's to the community.
Right, and it's like, that generated three hundred jobs or whatever, you'll be, we'll be able to keep track of the pluses.
And I think the definition, if we go back a slide, the first line, to develop a framework, not developer. So in other words, what he's saying is that we quantify what we've got in it so we can have results to show and tell. Not actively seeking dollars here, but indirectly by bringing people to town, money being spent in, in our community. That's what I believe our goal was from many of the classes we've had about this.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
I think that was it for mine. Maggie, would you like to?
Oh, no, just go back a little bit.
Annie, do you have anything else?
Well, I was reading this slide. Changed.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, let me talk about that real quick. So we have, right now, Civil Tech is doing a design project. We ordered, we awarded about sixty-eight thousand dollar contract, Mayor and Council did, to design the first phase of the industrial park or the business park. You know, basically, I think eight hundred feet of road improvements, including water and sewer. So we're estimating that to be about one point two million dollars. That is gonna be ready to bid here pretty quick. We'll have the plans and everything done, they're just about done with it. And I think that's really look at project number one, because that'll get those first few lots opened up, being able to develop it. Give some for Maggie to be able to show developers and stuff. The other thing that we're looking at is, and Maggie will talk about a little bit more, but having somebody develop a concept plan for that RV park that we talked about. Because as you know, it wasn't very successful, we had one person come in and it just wasn't what we wanted. So we thought if we approached it this way, like, let's define what we want out there. Let's define what we want that RV park to look at, let's come up with a concept. So we know we have so much dry camping, so much overnight camping, facilities, whatever that is. Let's get a concept and let you guys say, yeah, that'd be really nice out there. And then put that out for an RFP and say, this is what we want, see what we get. So we're talking, let's say, a year from now that we get these bids back, then we gotta come back and get water and sewer to the property. And at that point, Mayor and Council can go, okay, it's, we got a good developer, they can run the RV park. We've worked out the financing with them, how much they're gonna pay us, et cetera, like that. And then we, we're gonna have to extend water and sewer from the end of project one up to wherever the RV park's located on it. And we're thinking right now that it's gonna be up by the ball fields, but, you know, things can change on it. So that's where the seven hundred thousand, and that's really based on Civil Tech's costs of water and sewer right now, which is, Frank's always said about a hundred dollars a foot and they're now projecting a hundred and eighty-five a foot, because of what increased costs of materials and labor and stuff like that.
Is that with roads too?
Not without roads. So that doesn't include any road improvements that we have going up to it. So, so we're looking at two, two separate projects. Project one, let's get that going, let's get the one point two million dollar project under our belt and at least moving. And then we'll be coming back for the next phase.
Now, I know that, is it El Paso? Or what's, what's the gas company now?
Unisource.
Unisource. I know that they're holding us up, getting gas out there.
But they are working on it.
They are working.
I understand that, but when we're talking about doing this road, are we, are we including dry lines in there or something?
Yeah, we'll get gas to all the properties, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And they don't wanna dig a road up to put gas back in?
Absolutely not, right.
Okay.
Right. And this is more just conceptual at this point. I mean, we'll bring the plans and you guys can see what we're gonna do, but, I mean, we're just starting to move down the road here.
All right.
This is kind of getting past conceptual. When we're, what did we originally agree upon?
For as far as the water and sewer?
As far as the Old Home Manor?
It was to take, I think it was roughly six lots to go in and pretty much a T that would, that would extend, but get something, they're almost like a little, like a cul-de-sac or something, but a, a starting process.
And then I was thinking cul-de-sac as well.
I mean, well, it wasn't, it wasn't a cul-de-sac.
It was potential.
That's what it'll look like to begin with as a T, but then it would.
It could go on.
Extend.
And then, and then it also included sizing the piping to make sure it would be good for future growth. That, that was in the mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the, in the total master plan, so it's all coming together.
Cable.
That's the eight hundred eighty linear square feet that he was referring to.
I couldn't hear what she said inherently.
That's the eight hundred eighty linear square feet he was referring to, to project A, meaning that first part we guys already agreed upon.
Uh-huh.
Project B was to take it, take water and sewer to get it up to the RV park.
Okay. That's what I thought, but we've agreed upon the, the project A.
Yes, yes.
B is, that's just, hello, that's out there in the either land right now. We're not proposing that you guys fund that right now, so.
That would just be the next step.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna crack the egg open so you have a, where it may go.
So we had, you know, the RV park, we had the RFPs and didn't get good submittals. And I think taking it to the economic development, they wanted to have some estimates on what it would cost to, for us to provide water and sewer. So we're getting the estimates done and we're getting a conceptual done so that if we go back out for RFP, we can say, this is now what we're looking for. But you guys will see all that, this is just a study session that we're talking about, what's coming down the pike.
Right. So we'll come back to you and say, okay, we're ready to go out to bid for, for project number one, which is the T. And we're estimating that to be one point two. And once we do that, we'll go out to bid and see what we get, see what we get, the bids we get.
Okay, so I guess that's where we are, are we?
Ready to bite that off.
Are we ready to start moving that direction in this? Are we ready to start moving that direction in this? Seems to me that we got a whole lot on our plate, expense wise. We got a police department that, that's keeps getting more and more up on us. We got road improvements that need to be funded, you know.
I think all of these have been included in, to the budget. I think it's manageable.
Well, included in the budget, well then if it's included in the budget, it's past conceptual.
Well, but we've talked about all these things. We talked about the police department, we talked about this.
Not, I mean, the original T.
The original, the original T in, was as far as we were gonna go.
And that's all we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
We're not doing B yet.
Okay.
Is that, am I wrong in that statement?
No, you're right. You're absolutely right.
It's just that if we do do B, it's gonna cost us seven hundred thousand.
Right, so, cause this is about all of Old Home Manor.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we haven't made the decision to do B yet, but we're starting to put everything together so we can bring it to you for a decision.
Right now, it's don't be a do be.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay.
Short timer. Does she say to be or have to be as R G?
To be or not.
No, I'm sure.
Okay.
There you go. Now you get Josh.
What's up, Josh?
How much? Uh, so I was asked to talk more about the entitlement process of B, since we took care of the entitlement process for A, uh, last year when we rezoned the Old Home Manor to Business Park. Uh, it's, it's not industrial park, it's a business park. Uh, that's just a small clarification. As far as the entitlements for B, which is the RV park, uh, it would not require a general plan amendment. Uh, it currently falls either within the commercial area, which would accommodate a commercial heavy type zoning or commercial recreation. And an RV park, in my professional opinion, would be classified as a commercial recreational type use. So I don't believe a, a general plan amendment would be required. Uh, it would need to go through a rezoning uh, since, um, the direction I've heard from council is that we wanna hold ourselves to the same standards we would hold a developer. And as such, my recommendation would be to rezone it to a commercial heavy PAD. Uh, that way we can restrict the use specifically to RV and not any other uses within the commercial heavy type zone. And if somebody wants to change that, then they would have to come back through planning commission and council to, to make that change. So as far as entitlements, uh, that would take approximately, uh, eight to twelve weeks, two to three, two to three months, uh, once we get the conceptual development plan and when council decides to move forward with it.
And this plan will be provided by the person that we select to do the project?
Um.
Or is this something that we do?
Well, we had sort of talked about.
We haven't, nothing's been decided yet. We'll look at different options. Um, it could be that you guys decide, let's move forward and we'll do all the design and everything and then just bid that out. Or we can do it like a concessionaire agreement and do the whole park and then just have somebody else run it. None of those details are decided yet.
Okay.
This is just how we get the property ready to go?
Yes.
That's correct.
Right.
Any other questions?
It sounds simple to me.
All right.
Does commercial heavy allow for storage units?
Uh, well, that's where the PAD overlay would come into play. So if we rezoned it to commercial heavy PAD, planned area development, uh, we can restrict that list of uses to exactly what we want. And any amendment to that would require it to come back through ca- council to, to amend that PAD. The PAD is pretty much the zoning on that property. It's an overlay. Um, and it allows us the flexibility, uh, to restrict the types of uses to specifically what we want.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So where I'm at in the process right now is, um, we have hired Cecilia Vander Mullen. She's working on a concept plan for the RV park so that when we do either go back out to RFP or the town maybe decides to build it themselves, we have a, a concept that we're looking for. Um, because what it kinda failed before is when people got the RFP, it was very bland and what do you want? And well, we don't know, you show us. So now we're showing them what we want, you know? Um, so that's going to include, I told her to do about two hundred and fifty spaces, something creative that includes, includes dry camping, um, pickleball, community center, dog park, you know, just do the whole nine yards. So she's working on that and I'm anticipating getting that back next week. Um, and then I'll show it to you guys. I should be, I'm looking forward to that. Um, another thing that I need some guidance on is, and that we've talked about during the ED subcommittee meetings, are time limitations, quote unquote, on if you guys want to have, you know, what kind of limit on time can someone be there? Is it a, a season? Is it two weeks, which probably won't work? So need a little bit of direction on that forefront. I know Cecilia wants to. So what I did is I did some research and I kind of called a lot of different, uh, RV parks in the area and Camp Verde, et cetera. Um, mostly what I heard is it's kind of market driven. And what that means is if someone's coming to stay and do an overnight stay and it costs sixty bucks a night, well, they're not camping out there for three months. Um, but you also do have a lot of, you know, snowbirds and, and people who wanna stay for a couple of months and hang out and shop and dine in your town. Um, and they, most of them said they don't really have any problems. PV, the one that they do have time limitations or going to is the one that's gonna be in that new, um, that, uh, rec center, entertainment center downtown, because they'll have to. So just to let you know, most people aren't really putting a time limitation on it, but they'll have more, kinda like a CCNR, so to speak, where you can't put skirting on your, in your RV while you're, or hanging laundry out.
No permanent structures.
No permanent.
If, 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 if we did, say they had a sixty, whatever, a night for one night, is there a time break? As they, if they stay longer, does it get cheaper or does it stay?
Well, I mean, that would depend on the operator, and that's what they mean by market driven is.
Right, so council, if, if there was some discrepancy, when we first started talking about that, council said, we don't want long term. Some of you guys said that. And then we started getting into what's long term, what's short term. And we said, the market should probably dictate. We don't know what this market's like. So maybe these people that run RV parks can help us and say, we need twenty percent of this to be four months, maybe is long term. And we need another sixty percent to do this, and then the rest can be the dry camping and, you know, two nights or less. We don't know that, and I think if we would be putting limitations on some developer or some operator to say, nope, the longest you can have anybody is three or four nights, or you can only charge X, Y, and Z. I think they need to be able to tell us some of that. We've had, you have high college express interest that they have people that come up for three or four months for a semester, that they would like to be able to have somebody stay at an RV, um, right there next to the college. Uh, so we don't wanna limit it maybe for that, but, um, we also wanna listen to what council has to say when, when it comes to long term, so. Um, some people came out of that meeting saying, no long term, that means no more than two weeks. Um, my recollection from that meeting was, that's not a decision that needs to be made right now. So I think there was just differing opinions on that.
Could we, could we not canvas, um, like the Prescott, was Prescott down still? What's the?
Yes, and I did. That's what I did.
She's asked a handful of.
Pass there, and we drive in there a lot. And I noticed when, when we first started the job, that, that new section opened up. And then the people that were kinda up against the highway, they come in, filled up pretty quickly and then now the thing's completely full. But those original places, cause some of them are uni- unique. So they've been there since the beginning. So I don't know if that would be a resource to maybe go and talk to the people that are running that one.
She, I did.
She has, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I'd actually have him out here and showed him what we have out here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just saying.
No, I, I did, so.
I, I don't know how long they're gonna, how long they stay, but they've been there a long time.
And I can talk to him about that more now that I have.
Cause I mean, the thing is completely full now. It's completely full, and it's just a revenue source, so I don't know.
Basically, I have, and you see the RVs that are around our town and all over. There is no decent RV spot within fifty miles. Probably the best is up at Road two sixty on the I seventeen at Camp Verde. And so there's demand. People will come on vacation to visit us and go away two weeks, three weeks, a week, and spend money here. That's all I got to say.
And then in addition to that, part of what I'm having or putting in the concept planner, um, of spaces for horse trailers, obviously, to accommodate the equestrian center across the way, so.
Well, and that's, that's where I wanna go back up a bit. When, at least in my mind, when we started talking about an RV park out there, it was because we have a facility to have really nice ball tournaments, softball tournaments, soccer tournaments and everything, and no place for anybody to stay. We have a mud run, we have bicycle races, we have an equestrian center that people wanna come up and they wanna spend the weekend, a long weekend or whatever, and they've got no place to stay. So I think we, our big choice here is, are we building this RV park for our weekend visitors that come to our entertain, you know, things that we do for entertainment? Or are we building an RV park for the snowbirds that wanna come in and stay for four or five months? Which if they do, they will pack it. And you will have no place for anybody to stay with their horse trailers for the equestrian center. You'll have no place for anybody to stay when we have bicycle races. You'll be right back to the same place. So, for me, my idea was, I wasn't looking at it, I mean, my, my in-laws, they stayed in a place for five years as snowbirds down in Phoenix, okay? They went down there for four months. It was cool. Went down there. Nice clubhouse, swimming pool, you know, all the things. But this is Chino. I'm not saying we can't do it. But my idea was more of a place for people to come, for activities and that, to stay, um, for shorter periods of time. And it would be open for activities that happen in Chino Valley rather than long-term stay. Now, I'm, I'm thinking probably the long-term stay is probably more profitable.
Well, I think you could do a mixture to make an equilibrium. I think that if you have some, we put, if we put it out to RFP, we define that, saying, hey, you know, you need to have X percentage or, and let that conversation start too because they can't be in the red, obviously, as a developer. So I think you can define that and, and reach an equilibrium and an agreement where you say only X percent can be up to three months and that's it. Or you, you can figure it out that way, I think. But you're correct, absolutely. That, the point is to host events and get tourism here, not just people coming to stay and camp.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we do want the balance, but, um, it has to be able to make some money for the people to make it worth their while, I guess, to, to do it.
And the, and that's what I go back to. If this is such a great moneymaker, believe me, there's plenty of investors that would already be all over this.
Well, the problem is there's no infrastructure there, and so they don't like that. What's been a huge part of the problem is little direction and no water and sewer to the park for them. They've just all went that way.
Exactly right.
So.
Now, if we, I was, has been on exactly what Lon is saying. And we, and again, this was brought up in, in committee as well, that if the town wanted to go, and then this would be as far as that, the sewer and water extension up there, if we wanted to bite off a capital improvement of extending water and sewer up there, then it would be there for whoever, again, whatever kind of
However.
opportunity that the town is going to offer for developers to come in and develop a piece of property, build their building, they would need water and sewer. And if we were to extend that all the way up, I would be more inclined of the town creating just a very basic RV park to, and then you let the, we self-run it through either the equestrian center or the shooting range or the, uh.
Ball fields.
The ball fields.
Model airplane.
Or the, the, yeah, the model airplane people. They could then have this that, they, they have an event. But as far as to start biting off a clubhouse and laundromat and pickleball, you know, i- if there's such big money in that, then private industry will take care of that. We're looking at, again, doing something just to spawn, you know, some economic growth here without becoming developers. And I don't think just doing a, uh, very much of almost minimal RV spots because people that come in for that, you know, i- if you just have sewer and water, that, that's all you need, you know, so.
I think, like you guys are speaking, the events we have here, so we're not gonna spend time at the RV park. They're gonna be at the event, either the shooting range or the equestrian center or the model airplaneers or the bike run. They're gonna be at the events. They're not gonna be sitting here, so they don't need a pool. They don't need a clubhouse. So, uh.
Now, possibly, once the water and sewer are up there, then a private investor may come in and say, hey, I would like to lease this much land and let's negotiate, but then they build from there. But right now, the cost of, of getting the water is there and again, we brought that mark out there and showed them where it was and interested, but not when you say, well, sewer is down over that rise and that's where our water is. It's like, this just won't pay.
So I think we did some, um, we punched some numbers on that that wasn't brought up earlier. Um, that if we get, you know, the last R G developers that didn't follow through, they were, they were offering eleven thousand a month for the, to phase in. And I'll let Mark get a little bit more into that, but it kinda pays itself off pretty quickly. Um, and I think also that it just kinda depends on what you're looking for. Are you looking for event-based only? Or do you wanna actually bring people into town, otherwise, that would, may come here and may be an investor themselves? Or it just kinda depends on, I think more of an equilibrium would be something I would suggest. But to get it started, that's also, if, just to get something started out there.
The proposal we got, that, it, it was definitely based off of a storage yard, not off of an RV park.
Yeah.
And that was what their first phase was. They just wanted to come in and let me do an RV storage.
Yeah.
And then as we can afford to do the next, then we'll do the next. It was just like, no.
Yeah, that wasn't gonna work.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we can have somebody invest that kinda money just for events because I don't think we have enough events to keep that going, not yet.
And then I'm, I agree with you one hundred percent. What I was getting at was, at least in my mind, that's where we started, was some place for people to stay. So I don't necessarily feel that you need the Taj Mahal to do that. I think if you had a really good AB, you know, I mean, area, um, and people, people that are going to the equestrian center aren't used to pulling in on blacktop streets with curb and gutter next to a clubhouse. They're looking for a place they can get their truck and trailer in and out, plug into some electricity hopefully and, uh, and have some water. Um, your bicycle racers, your hunters, your, um, even your people that go to the shooting range and things like that. I'm just not sure that, that they need all of that or want all of that. And I think that, in hopes that we could do something that would still give them a place to stay in Chino Valley, so that they eat at our restaurants and, you know, they stay here in town during that time and make it affordable for both us and for them.
So, looking at what we have in front of us, what is our direction? You know, we're already going to a conceptual plan for an RV park, and I, I don't know why.
Well, to, in order to send it back out to RFP, we need to have a little bit more detailed. And with what I'm hearing from you, I'm definitely gonna have her, um, dumb it down, so to speak, and take out some of what you're talking about. Is that what you're directing me to do? We don't need a community center, just kind of do something a little bit more simple for right now? Is that where you?
Can she phase it?
Yep, that could be another thing.
Can, let's start out with the absolute minimum and then, you know, build it in. You know, you do have to put, which we've done in other projects, we did it at the ball fields. We knew we couldn't light them all at one time, so we ran the conduits in the ground without electricity, you know, and, and, and something like that where, okay, maybe this is what we'd like to have in the end, but we'd really like to be able to start with just some place for people to park for overnight camping to begin with. How do we get, how do we get there?
Okay.
Josh would like to say something.
Uh, the conceptual development plan is also a requirement of the zoning. So as soon as we have a conceptual development plan that the council agrees on, at that point, we could take it forward to get rezoned. But for a PAD, that conceptual development plan is a required component.
Did you catch that?
Then as far as, yes. Then as far as going forward, I think our first step is, can we even afford to get water and sewer out there and to a size that, you know, Public Works is gonna accept?
Joe?
Again, because we're, we don't wanna put in a small line if we're gonna run that far, so let's, let's not. So let's, let's not...
And what can look on to between point A and B?
And then, once we know what that cost is...
Well, I was just going to ask you, if we're not going to...
When I hear how much, I just figured Joe's coming. Can we afford?
Well, and the answer to that question is, we need to really define our numbers and make sure that we have the good, a very good cost estimate on it. So, plus, there's going to be a point in time where, you know, because whether we do it out of pocket or whether we borrow to do the project. I mean, so, there's a lot, it's not just yes or no, we have the money, I can't say that. We need to really define the numbers, see what it's going to be, see how big of an improvement we're going to put out there and then make the decision.
And do you also think we'll have to put in what our projected recap is on it?
Right, right.
You know, you can't just say, okay, it's going to cost seven hundred thousand, use that number because it was there.
Right.
But it's going to take us twenty-two and a half years to recoup that, you know, that might turn some people on.
So we need to analyze a lot more before we can answer, honestly answer that question, so...
So before we start designing an RV park, let's see if we can even get water and sewer to it. Because if we can't, then what, what's the point of spending money, you know?
Well, I think we already gave direction to get the conceptual design though.
Yeah, we, you did, I think through the Economic Development Committee was... It, it's twenty-five hundred, maybe twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred is what the design...
Yeah, and I'd really, I'd really be interested in seeing what she thinks about what's, what would be absolutely necessary in the first step. And then go to the next one, and the next one, and the next one. And I think that'll give us a lot better idea of what we can afford and, and, because it may be something that we don't.
Right.
You know, put out to a develop, you know, to somebody to come in and build and operate, we just say, hey, the town's going to do it, you know?
Right, but eventually, we might want somebody to operate it, just like the concessionaire agreement with the shooting range, but...
There's lots of RV parks around by cities in town. Yes, sir.
Oh, I said, without having a concept of what, what we can do out there, I think we're just in the dark. Once she gives us a concept, where we can, or where's direction we can go, then we'll have a better idea to go ahead and say, yeah, we want to do this, or no, that's the sort of way.
And that's why I think Civil Tech has to do their work too and provide us some costs, so that we have all the pieces here, then you guys can make an informed decision.
Right.
And we can decide how that's going to look, whether, again, how it's going to be bid out, timeframes, who's going to operate, what the structure's going to look like.
Well, and I think the concept's only going to be twenty-four hundred dollars, probably eased a lot of minds up here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
One more question, so like, if, if I'm going to have her phase it, in the first phase, trees, what, I mean, that's, those are cost-associated things, but you have to have shade out there.
I think that would be all dependent on our requirements, wouldn't it, Josh?
Well, with the PAD, you can almost do anything.
Yeah, so with the PAD, the conceptual development plan is what's attached to that zoning ordinance. And we are required to abide by that conceptual development plan within the ten percent allowance, one way or the other. So after the entitlements are adopted by council and the PAD's zoning...
Yeah, because when she's recording, she won't pick you up.
Sorry. So, once the PAD is adopted by council and the ordinance goes into effect thirty days later. Then they would come back through if they wanted to start development and go through a site plan review. And at that point, we would make sure that all development proposals for that conceptual development, follow the conceptual development plan. And met our landscaping and lighting ordinances as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to see any variance for us versus private sector.
Well, as the, as the public, I would say that as we write our narrative for the PAD rezoning. That we incorporate in that all of the requirements that we, the town, will meet with regards to landscaping and lighting. To make sure that we are at board or exceed what we would require a regular developer.
I agree with you. Thank you.
And what kind of timeline are we allowed? In other words, phasing, okay, we're going to have this landscaping, we're going to have this lighting. But in the first year, we're going to get this done, in the second year, we're going to get this done, or does it not work that way?
It doesn't really matter with regards to the PAD, as long as what you're developing. The only time the phasing comes in, where there's an issue with how to time it, is with subdivisions. Because of the preliminary plat versus the final plat. And how, how do you phase it with things that are just recorded? So this is a single property with spaces, not lots. And so there's no real phasing issue, we as the town will phase it how you, the council, want us to phase it. And if you want us to put phase lines on the conceptual development plan that's adopted in by ordinance, I mean, we can do that too.
What, Maggie, what were you referring to as far as trees and shade? Or was that not Maggie?
I can hear what you said.
Yeah.
Who brought up the needing trees and shade out there? Oh, that was you, okay.
I did, just, you know, if we're doing phasing, and so you want it very simple to start with. I think he answered the question on that, or setting the bar for that. I just really think that you can't just have dirt, I think you need to have shade for people to sit under. And you've got to have something beyond just dry spots. But what he said's going to drive that, so...
Yeah, we'll, we'll define it how the council wants it, as part of the PAD.
Right. That's pretty much it, just, we'll, I'll end it with, you know, bringing water and sewer up to the RV park will have ancillary benefits. For other entertainment venues or equestrian parks, the, the other people will benefit from it other than the RV park, so... That's it, any questions?
You haven't got enough already?
I was going to say more questions.
I thought, probably not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what are resources, two more slides, we're done. So, RV park is commercial property. Right now, under our service area, right, we can actually service an RV park without having a certificate of assured water supply. This would be one big connection going to that commercial enterprise with those types of leases that they have. Anything that does not require, or is not defined as a subdivision, so any entity that's not a subdivision. We can use our service area right for anything out at Old Hall Manor and feed water to that without a certificate. However, if something does come along that requires a certificate, a subdivision of some sort, commercial, industrial, wherever it may be. The town does have a water portfolio, it's not huge, but we do have some assured water supply credits. And we're also ever-increasing the amount of reclaimed water, which can also be used for assured water supply purposes for a certificate. So, we do have a portfolio, we can actually have some subdivisions, should that come along someday in this enterprise, as it moves forward potentially. So, water is obtainable through service area right or our portfolio. And just one reminder, the Integrated Water Master Plan is defining what our portfolio looks like, to make sure we've got everything covered. And also has defined what the total water budget is being predicted for all of Old Hall Manor at build-out. It's roughly about seventeen hundred acre feet per year, every year, so that's just a, an estimate. And that will change, obviously, as things come in, but...
So, so Mark, can we throw out a hypothetical? Let's say we get it all rezoned, we get the thing done, we get the utilities up there, and somebody comes with a proposal where they want to buy the land. How would that work with water?
So if they bought the land and they wanted to, let's say, build a subdivision, commercial subdivision?
No, I'm talking about an RV park.
RV park, they bought the land, it's still a commercial enterprise, it's not a subdivision, they're not selling lots, pads, parcels. We can still serve it under a service area right.
And they would not have to get an assured water supply, okay?
We could actually have five thousand apartment complexes out there, all served under our service area right, would not require a certificate of assured water supply.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I probably should have stated a little more clarity on the word, the term of art developer. So, I think that was more in the context of what Joe had spoke about with the district, looking at a parcel, or the entire encompassing acreage of Old Hall Manor. And more of a business strategy that, as a developer would, how much money are you willing to risk upfront for investment? And what's that return look like? And I should have been more specific, so I apologize. Just from that standpoint of a business model, as a developer would look at land. So I apologize that I wasn't specific on, on that clarity. If you go to the last slide, please. And just some questions that we wanted to throw out there, if you wanted to have further discussion. Or just leave these with you as we look at this conceptual business plan.
So look at number two.
I know, I'm going to get, I'm going to get to number two.
Sophisticated development.
So, number one is, who's driving development at Old Hall Manor? Is it development, or is it the town, or is it both? So just, I'll leave that in your court. And it's actually, yes, we're actually, the town act more like a sophisticated developer. Or rely on the entities who are trying to, we're trying to attract. So, who's investing what, you know, is it developer-driven only? Or do we want to try and get ahead of that and make some investments, which then drives development to come to Old Hall Manor? What's the need to get the ball rolling? I think you heard several concepts here by various staff of maybe looking at how we get this ball rolling from a financial investment. Whether that's looking at existing funds or borrowing, the water development, economic development, so forth. So, there's certain activities that could get this ball rolling. And of course, there's risks, what are the risks associated with investing or borrowing, with uncertainty in the economy and so forth? And of course, what's the return on investment? Obviously, how you want to look at this as a business or the investment and return on investment. And obviously, there's some, I think you already spoke about those very eloquently, which were intangible benefits to the community. What do they have for value? So, those are other components that would have to be looked at. And how, how could this business plan be structured to show investment, return on investment portfolio? And I think Joe touched on that. And then, of course, lastly, status quo. We can continue doing what we've done, and I'll tell you that Old Hall Manor has been vacant for a very long time, two decades, primarily vacant. It's undeveloped land primarily, so, status quo, I think it'll grow, you know, relatively slowly. Because I will tell you that an RV park does not have the financial wherewithal to potentially invest in a water and sewer extension. For a mile or a half a mile. And that's where I think we have to look at this as a business opportunity. But again, that's just an option, look at, when you look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, you know, there's always that, you want if you do nothing? Just continue on, so I just wanted to raise that as well. It's just food for thought and happy to entertain, all of us are happy entertaining for a discussion regarding this very high level. It's very high level, we got into some weeds, but very high level concept of partnership investment return and so forth for Old Hall Manor.
Mark, we've, we've also talked as far as the whole water issues with the town and committee. Again, you know, an outside water tank. That could possibly assist in that, that water line going through the center of Old Hall Manor as well, then, is that right?
Correct, we'll have a lot more details when Civil Tech, they're going to come back with a capital improvement plan, which is a five-year strategy. Looking at year one through year five of what they believe, based on all of the conversations they've had with the, that workshop that we had. With staff that have looked at, you know, where things are currently, the activities are at Old Hall Manor. And how are utility, both water and sewer, to your question. That capital improvement plan will have those, there'll be another workshop to talk about those specific things. That very well could be one of the proposed infrastructure improvements that becomes reality as a water, water production and a water storage facility up on top of the hill. That provides gravity flow system at very, at reduced cost, back through the entire system, helping with looping and reliability and robustness for the, for the water utility.
That could also include some different financial off, options on how to pay for this, correct?
Correct, I'm not the financial expert Joe is, but from a standpoint of borrowing money from WIFA. It's, you're talking almost free money from a borrowing standpoint, it's very low interest, and some of the principal sometimes is forgiven. Or unless you want to write your own check. If that's the case, where the enterprise funds have enough money to do that, obviously, that would be another opportunity. And there's our grants and opportunities that exist out there as well, from an infrastructure standpoint.
Clay?
I believe proper planning with some guidance will help, rather than just let things happen as appears. It grows and then all of a sudden, we're behind the curve. I'm not saying, go and spend this, I say, continue on with the research, the preparatory of information. So that we can make an intelligent decision based on known facts.
I had a question for Josh. On this, Josh, we talked about the PAD. Does the PAD have any rules over the way the park is operated as far as time of stay or anything like that? Does that have to be part of the PAD, or is that total management?
It does not have to be part of the PAD, but if you're writing a zoning ordinance for that property, which is what the PAD is. If you want to incorporate time limits and things like that, that's completely up to you.
No, I was just thinking, we're talking about, you know, uncertainty and how, how things are, you know, we may go in there and say, okay, this is how we want to operate this. Because we want these people to have the opportunity to utilize it. But then maybe times change and, and we say, well, no, you know what? We need to make this where we can have long-term stay in here and, and do this. So we have that ability to move that stuff around as time goes on.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't tie it down then.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, I'm good. Amy?
Huh.
I can't see her.
I don't know. How long's the equestrian center actually been up there now, four years? Three years?
About four years.
I think it was like seven years ago we were talking about it in here.
About four years.
Yeah, so, the rec side of Old Hall Manor is kind of like what I invested in, I really, that's... So I'm all about the RV park, and my original thoughts were for the equestrian center, the gun range, and then the activities we have around here. The main reason why I was very anti-long term is because I don't want a trailer park at Old Hall Manor, honestly. I mean, that's, so if we could do something where, and, and Clay, this has been years in the making, so I... We keep going back and forth of like, we're going to go, and no, we're not going to go, we're going to go, no, we're not going to go. But it's, we've been doing this for a while. And I would be willing to entertain a percentage of long-term versus short-term. But I am, I'm sticking to not doing a long-term right off the bat, I can't.
And I can agree with you on the long-term because of the way it becomes. But looking at the one that I can look out at, at the racetrack out there.
Right, right.
You know, that, they have a higher standard or something because they are immaculate.
You know, those things are more expensive than my house.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they're, I mean, but the whole park itself is immaculate.
It is nice.
You know, and, and I don't know if there's different rules, or if it's management just alone, you know, somebody could address that at another time, but... I agree with you, long-term wood, you don't want to see a trailer park. But then again, to see how clean and nice those places are, it's pretty amazing.
A lot of those people have lived there for a number of years at this point. But they still appear like they could hook on and be gone in twenty minutes, like a typical RV park.
And I think that's the key right there, so no permanent structures, I think that's the key to make it look like, yeah, it's just still an RV park, that's, you're just temporary.
And one, and I mentioned this to Josh before, is whether to actually create some sort of zoning classification strictly for RVs. And, and I, he said no, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not con, con, completely convinced.
Right, so we wouldn't want to create a zoning district for RVs since RVs are already allowed in specific districts already. But we could create a separate section that has design review guidelines that RV parks would be required to follow. Kind of like the landscape section or the parking section, the lighting section, they have requirements for all development. You can create one for, we have one for wireless facilities, we have one for medical marijuana. So it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility to create one for RV parks.
And then, and this, and this was brought up, and I'm trying to make sure we stay within our discussion. Is that as, if there are other RV parks that come in and get zoned, that, that they don't turn into just affordable housing? You know, we want them to maintain, you know, because I don't think that would be beneficial for Chino to allow them, just to, again, be affordable housing.
Right, so a section for RV park design review guidelines would, if it's adopted into the UDO. Would affect all RV parks that are not currently operating. Because those currently operating would be grandfathered in.
Is there any interest in pursuing that within the UDO?
You know, but can we wait and make that decision? Because you might be able to do some of this just through an agreement with whoever the operator is. If it's through a concessionaire agreement, the attorney might be able to write some of that up. And that's how they have to operate the park, is based on what you guys decide. So I think we can wait on some of those details with your new manager.
She doesn't want to deal with it. She doesn't want to deal with it. I, I say, I would think pause on the whole UDO, um, and then just do it case-by-case basis if, instead of putting that in, that's my opinion. Instead of doing a separate designation for RV parks.
You're, you're a few steps down the road, let's just start getting some of the, see if you guys even want to move forward once we get going.
Okay.
Kind of get the concept to us and then we can make detailed decisions later, as it's appropriate.
Thanks.
Thank you. All good, all done?
They want to go home, I don't blame them.
No, one more thing.
Oh.
We're not done.
No, no, I'm done with that, that we just talked.
Oh.
Okay, item.
Maybe I'm ready to go home.
You taking the chief spot tonight?
Yes.
Item five, presentation of detailed five-year wastewater treatment plant capital plan regarding the required capital expenditures and funding sources anticipated over the next five years. This is Joe, again.
Thank you.
I'm just here for a quick presentation, good, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Uh, we, we put together a five-year plan for a conception, or for our capital improvement plan. Uh, most of it's stuff we've talked about in the utility subcommittee meeting, so you're gonna recognize all this. I do have our plant operator Clint Wilson here with us today. I wanted him to come up and do the presentation, let you guys get to know him, ask him questions and.
We'll beat him up for you.
Again, my name's Clint Wilson, I run the wastewater treatment plant. These are the issues that I see on a daily basis that need to be addressed within the next five years, because if they're not addressed now, if we do lose them, it's gonna cost us a lot of money in an emergency situation. So, to start off with, uh, we got UV replacement, we use UV for our sanitization. Uh, rotomat repair is our headwork screen, so as influent comes in, it brings rags and stuff that screen, the rotomat will actually remove those screens so they can stay out of our MBRs.
I'm sorry, we don't know what MBR is.
Yeah, what's MBR?
An MBR is a membrane biological reactor, it's what our plant is made out of. It's, um, just plates, like filters that build a film on them, so as water is being pulled through it, that film has different bacteria in it that will remove the arsenics and remove the heavy metals and remove, convert the ammonias into nitrogens, so that's what our MBR is.
Those are the filters that we replaced two or three years ago?
About four years ago, yeah.
Four years ago, really? Was it four years ago? Wow.
It can't be four years ago.
Whether you have fun or not.
Yeah, it don't matter.
So, and then blower airlines, um, we have blowers, they're just low blowers, and they blow air into different basins because different bacteria, some require air and some don't require air, and that can, is the biological, um, separation of the ammonia to nitrates to nitrogen gas. Our airlines leak so bad right now, when it rains, our ground bubbles, and it's, it's causing deficiencies in our plant. So, it has to be replaced. Go to the next slide. Uh, our new building, it's up, it's coming together, it's looking good, it's gonna be a great improvement on the plant. Also, we're looking to put in a lift station screw. Material coming into our lift station are destroying our pumps, and we're not talking about rags or toilet paper, we're talking about two-by-fours and grappling hooks and drywall insulation. Just amazing stuff that you would have no idea how it gets down there, but it gets down there, and it plugs up our pumps, and it breaks our pumps, and we have to emergency call crane company to come in and help us out and pull our pumps up. And then we're in a position of.
Well, I'm happy.
No, 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 not necessarily. I'm all for what he's talking about.
So, this would be put in right before the lift station, so it would catch everything pre, pre-lift station, and it would dump it into a, a trash can. And we have waste management already picking up our biosolids, so we can roll this into that biosolids report when we have waste management carry it out for us. Next is a screw press, right now we use a belt press. After we pull the solids out of our wastewater, we have to compress and separate the water from it the best we can because it all goes to the dump. And if you don't separate the water, then we're shipping water to the dump. Um, right now, we're anywhere between eleven and fourteen percent solid, this would get us up to the twenty, twenty-five percent solid. So, also our belt press is currently on its last leg, as you would say. We had some electrical problems with it, it cannot be repaired, or can repaired, but the cost of repairing it is eighty percent of a brand-new piece of machinery. So, that's why we're looking at getting a new screw press put in. We're also looking at putting in a drying bed that'll help when we do cleanups or plugs, be a big place where we can put all of our dirty ground or dirty water that can settle out and dry, and it'd be more environmentally stable to throw away. An equalization basin, engineering is something that's coming down the line. Um, we need an equalization basin to slow the water in, down coming into the plant. Right now, the hydraulics of the plant are extremely high during the day and extremely low during the night. MBR plants are designed for a smooth, consistent flow, and having an MBR would not only extend the life of our plant, but it would make our plant run a lot more economical, it'll save the life of a lot of our equipment. Twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, we're looking at, um, building the equalization basin, uh, a waste holding tank. Right now, at our basin, we have two different sides, those sides pull waste out, and when they come together, we have to pump one side at a time to run it through the belt press. Well, each side has its own type of structure, its own life cycle, so it has its own density. So, it becomes a real hassle trying to get a consistent, uh, press out of them and to get a consistent, uh, moisture content. So, having a waste holding tank would bring those together, allow them to blend, and also give them a little more aeration time for the bacteria to break down solids. Blowers, our blowers are low blowers right now, are older blowers, they're very expensive to run, they're very loud, they leak oil. They are, they're workhorses, but in a couple of years, we're gonna need to replace them, and we want to replace them with something that's a little more technology advanced, it's a little bit easier to run, a little bit less maintenance, less downtime, and easier replacement. So, uh, these last slides is twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five. The first part we're gonna need to do is get a grit separator. As dirt and gravel and eggshells and all those inorganic material comes into the plant, it's separated through a, a road reaction with it's coming in and it starts spinning in a circle and the heavier stuff settles out, sorry, settles out, and then it's pumped out of there. Well, everything has a life cycle, and the plant's fifteen years old, and that, I'm projecting that we're going to need to start looking at replacing that within four years. And then the last thing, we're gonna have to replace membranes again, because membranes only have about a ten-year life cycle, they're plastic, they wear down, and we'll be right at that ten-year mark where we can start replacing those individual filter, or those panels and filters. And that's it, any questions?
Can you back up the slides, please?
How far?
And just up, right there, whoop, go back. Whoop, one more back. So, here you have a, oh, engineering, I didn't catch that part, I'm sorry. Hundred thousand, and then the equalization basin itself is, this is just for the engineering.
This is just for the engineering, the design.
Okay, I have a question for, I guess it's you, Mike, but, uh, the things we've been doing with, uh, not core, what's the name of them people? Horn?
Horn?
Kimmy Horn.
Is that not, it's got some of this stuff in it?
Yes, it does, that's what we reviewed with you before, and they've, they've got the design and everything on that, but it was not the engineer as far as for construction.
I'm sorry, missed half of what you said.
It's not.
Mike?
It's a concept.
I think this is just a review of what we've already heard in the past.
It was, yeah, what Kimmy Horn did was, was a basically conceptual plan for us to show you what benefits we would have. It is not a plan for construction, so this hundred thousand would be actual engineering and construction plans.
I see, so they just did like a study, basically.
That was all part of the septicage study that we had.
And the septicage is not in this anywhere that I saw?
No, it's not.
That's separate?
That's a dead, dead duck.
No, I guess they're doing additional work.
Hold your head still.
Septicage, we just, we gotta be very careful with septicage. I know there's a lot of money in it, it's really easy, and it's a really easy job to get into, but we had a trailer park dump on us for three days and destroyed our plant for about two months. Just destroyed it. The, the biological activity inside of a septicage plant is completely different than what's going on in my plant. So, when you mix all those together, you get all these inorganics and these organics, and they get blended together, and it makes it hard for the bacteria, the heterofo and the autotroph bacteria that I'm running in my plant to break those molecule bonds between the park, and something.
Plastic.
Not plastic, but just, it's more of the.
Inorganic.
Inorganics, and the organics, they blend together and they become what's called a TKN, it's total congealed nitrogen, and it's, it's very hard for a small footprint plant like ours to break that down. If we had an extended aeration plant, it would be different, like Prescott's, but we're really small. We have a very short detention time, comes in and comes out within six hours. So, we have to be able to do all that changing.
But Kimmy Horn is still looking at the septicage stuff.
I was gonna say, Kimmy Horn has not completed their.
Yeah.
Report yet, I know they're.
Because they were talking about a plant expansion to handle that.
Exactly, and, and they're talking, they can build a separate plant.
Separate basin even for the septicage and.
Yeah.
So, that's still, that's still a separate thing that we're waiting on Kimmy Horn to complete their report to us.
Can we go, uh, to twenty-twenty-one? What do we have, what are we at right now? Has this already been, we already budget approved this?
I can't hear you, Amy, I'm very sorry.
Did we already approve this, any budget?
In the budget?
No, this has all been.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That was my question.
So, Mayor and Council on this, in your packet, you've got the spreadsheet with all these numbers. The stuff in light blue is what we're gonna use WIFA reserve funds for.
Okay.
Because every year, we've been putting a little bit away for repair and replacement of the plant, WIFA actually requires us to do it. So, we've got about, I believe, about a million, a little over a million dollars in cash that we can use to pay for everything in the blue this fiscal year. The stuff that's not in the blue will have, is new expansion items, so we have to use our enterprise funds to do that.
I'm sorry, you're saying blue?
Light blue.
On this spreadsheet.
In your package, on the back.
In your packet.
It's in your packet?
The back page.
Very last page.
Like three lines up from the bottom, it has total WIFA million.
Well, no wonder you gave me this one, they don't have that stuff.
But it does have, um, wastewater treatment plan budget. The grit screw to lift station. Joe? Okay, so, the screw press is, not the screw press, the lift station screw. But, I understand that. The lift station screw is out of the wastewater treatment plan budget, I see, right?
Yes.
Okay, and grit to lift station to prevent materials, et cetera, two hundred thousand dollars, have we already, has that already been approved?
We haven't brought it to you for approval, but it is in our budget to do that.
But we didn't approve it for this upcoming year.
So, you approved the budget, but the item hasn't come before Council for approval.
Can we make that happen?
Yes.
The only one that I thought that was more urgent was the grit separator, but that's still, that's still a few years out.
When you guys took, when you guys took over the plant, uh, Mike went in and they went in and replaced the gearing on top of it, which, which gave it new life. So, the mechanics of it are good now, but in five years, we're gonna start losing the structure of it. We're gonna start getting holes in it, you can see the corrosion. One of the gases from sewer is hydrogen sulfide, when it mixes with water, it becomes hydrochloric acid. So, that acid starts to eat through and rust everything. So, I imagine, just covering my bases, in five years, I imagine we're gonna be at a point where that's gonna need to be replaced then or rightly soon. And if we lose that piece of equipment, then all that grit ends up in the basin, and that is, that plugs our filters or our membranes up.
So, you're talking, now let's go, let's go back through real slowly each one of the slides, just keep going, progression.
No, go forward.
Forward, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have, we have our drying bed, um, or we have our equalization basin engineering. Okay, so keep going. Okay?
Then the construction.
In this five-year plan, it isn't, there's nothing in you for building the equalization bed?
Right there.
There is.
Equality basic destruction, five hundred thousand dollars at the top. I didn't put a picture in there because.
Okay.
It was on the last slide and I didn't want to.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else?
No more questions?
I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, oh, I'm sorry, any questions, anybody?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm good too.
My favorite part.
All ready? Okay, make a motion, adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Motion in four seconds.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
I don't care if you're in favor or not, we're doing it. Thank you, everyone.
Motion carries, good night.
Josh. Josh. Josh.